Yeah.
Yeah.
Wet snow with the rain.
Seven o'clock.
You gentlemen already over there?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Over here, Mr. Cam Michaels in Chicago or somewhere.
Are we on TV still?
I'd like to call to order the Bucksport Town Council meeting for Thursday, October 27, 2016. Road call, please, Kathy.
Joseph York?
Here.
Paul Raff?
Here.
David Keen?
Here.
David Keen?
Here.
Peter Stewart?
Here.
Paul Goglin?
Here.
Robert Carmichael absent.
Okay, do you want to make announcement?
Yes, for those who have been wondering, our Time Warner feed on the cable station is not working at this point because of the box that's provided by Time Warner that sends our signal out over that station. However, we are video streaming. We are live streaming on the computer if you go to the town hall streaming. People can see our broadcast from that and our IT person is working on getting the cable provider to provide us a new box connection so that all of our equipment within the building is working. It's where it goes out onto their network that is not. So if you talk to any of your -- those of you who are seeing this, if you talk to any of your friends that have Time Warner, they can still see this broadcast via video streaming on the computer as opposed to on TV at this point.
And those are all archived too, so they can watch it after the fact.
Yes.
Okay, item three is presentation of any town council recognitions. I don't believe we have any tonight. Item four, consider minutes of previous meetings.
I don't have any.
Okay, item five, receive and review correspondence and documents. The first one being weekly construction summary from the sewer treatment plant. Susan?
Yes, we have the report from the week of October 14th and the 21st, which itemizes all the work that continues to be done. If you are traveling past that site, you will notice a lot more construction, a lot more activity. The plan is that certain parts of the operation are going to switch from the existing system to the new system sometime after the beginning of the year so that construction can be completed on the part that we have to disconnect from the old system, but the construction and the plant continue to go very well.
Okay, thank you. Item B is Maine Maritime Academy response to a letter that was sent on 10/11/16.
The town sent a letter to Maine Maritime Academy several weeks ago in support of the idea of the location of a Mariners Training Institute here in Bucksport on the AIM property or in that general area. Maine Maritime has responded to our letter indicating that they appreciate our support for such a development. They are in the process at this time of doing due diligence to figure out whether that type of an entity makes financial sense for them and they're also looking at several sites as a possible location. But this letter is just their response to one that the town sent in support of this project.
Okay, thank you. Item C is Northeast Historic Films Thank You Letter.
The town in its budget this year appropriated $2,000 to support the International Maritime Film Festival, which was a jury contest that was held here in Bucksport on September 16. And this letter is from Northeast Historic Film thanking the town for that support. It was a very successful venture.
Thank you. On to item six, new ordinances to be considered. I don't believe we have any tonight. Item seven, discussion items for managers clarification or direction or council discussion or input on issues. First one being waterfront committee meeting.
Yep, that would be me.
Yes, sir.
A quick update for tonight. There were three items on this evening's agenda. One is a request has been made or an inquiry regarding memorials along the waterfront. A family is -- a family member was a resident here in town and so forth and they were asking what type of thing could be done. So the waterfront committee tonight came up with the idea that number one priority would be a granite bench similar in concept to what is already out along the waterfront. So we're going to move forward to the point of trying to get some pricing on that as feedback to the family. And we'll be writing a letter off to the family asking what kind of memorial they had in mind and what kind of expense or cost would be acceptable to them. So that's the progress on that. Next item was the ad hoc group goals. Ad hoc group, we defined several weeks ago, five goals. One has been already taken -- well, two out of the five have already been taken care of or underway. And the items number three, four, and five, which has to do with consolidation of different department activities under one marina manager or equal over here. Anyway, that now really falls into the attention of the town manager. So she now has all of the information she needs and at her convenience will start working on that. And then finally, the subject of food vendors has come up again and the consensus of the group was in favor of such a thing, but initial thought is that they would have two sites to be determined and that next thought process was that out of those two sites, we would accept applications for people that would be interested in them. And we'd also work as part of the waterfront committee to set up a time window over the summertime when they would be allowed to be doing that. So that's kind of where we sit tonight with that. And this food vendor also ties in with the -- interacts with the work of the ordinance committee. So those are the three items that were addressed tonight.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, next one being ordinance committee meeting for tonight.
Yeah, we met and we're going over chapter six, which is the business license and permit regulations. Code enforcement officer Jeff Hammond did a total rewrite of what we currently have and some changes in moving forward, less regulations, better regulations, better permitting process, easier to understand document, changing some words and some verbiage. We decided that instead of trying to go through the whole thing in a committee meeting, the decision was made to give each of the council members a copy of his draft to look at, go over. We're going to reschedule another ordinance committee meeting at our next council meeting with hopefully some ideas and some thoughts to be able to see what some changes that were made, any concerns or comments we have. And it may take another meeting after that to go forward. But appreciate the work that Jeff did on this. It was pretty cumbersome, but there are a lot of regulations and rules that I think we've either condensed or found not necessary that he's taking care of. So. Any else, Jeff, that you want to mention on that?
No.
So what we've decided is to -- everybody's got a copy of the draft. Take it home, take a look at it. Take your time to kind of go through or compare what's been removed, what's been added, what's been condensed, and then we come back and talk about it again.
Okay, any questions?
Is there a draft of that holding up on the website?
There will be. There will be. Yep. Thanks.
Okay, item C is swimming pool water leak issue. Susan?
Yes, our recreation director, Tim Emery, has been keeping an eye on the fact that over the past summer, the pool lost a lot more water than it normally does over the course of a season. And he's had a pool company come and take a look at it to see what might be going on. And they discovered that the seal in the pool that has an add-on piece to keep things from getting sucked down it. A number of years ago, there was a law passed because of the death of a child who got pulled into one of these drains. They have to have these cap-type things that don't allow for that to happen. And Tim and the pool company in reviewing this took this apart to see. And while there were seals in some places in the level between the bottom of the pool and this, there's a space where it's no longer sealed. And so the idea thought is that when the pool is sealed this coming year, that that area gets sealed again and monitor this year to see if the water level returns to or stays more like where it used to be. And the second thing was to, when having the pool sealed this year, have it done by an entity that does that. It's been done by volunteers and which is very helpful, but a company doing that, there is some guarantees, warranties associated with that kind of work that we should look at in terms of doing that. Tim's here for additional questions, but much of the pool has been redone. The back wall, I think, is the one that hasn't been done over time. But this is something that we need to keep an eye on. As I said, Tim and the pool person indicated that this, where this seal was, it's not sealed now, could be a source of where water's going out also.
Tim, could, I mean, like the lakes, could the lack of rain have had anything to do with it? I mean, lakes are...
No, you could see water running across the back.
Oh, you can see it? Oh, okay.
Yeah.
But the other thing we bring up, Paul, is good, because sometimes when we do lose water, the groundwater is in there already. So we don't, it's not, you don't realize how much you're losing. But with the lack of rain this year, you can see it. But it's like Sue was saying that by law, we had to put these drains on. And we never really taken a look underneath the cover because there's another, our original drains are under there and that's where we saw the problem under that. So I think if we, there wasn't volunteers, but there are part-time people that sealed the pool. But if we, I'd like to see it go one more year and come in and seal it and then take a look if there's something beyond that. There may be a possibility of pipe underneath. These are PVC pipes that we put in. Years ago, when I first came, they had the mill pipes. And I had to, back then, we didn't have to pay for the water. And what I had to do is when I filled the pool, half of it was orange because the pipes were all rusted. So you had to drain the whole thing and do it again. Then 1990, we did the whole pool and put PVC pipes in. We hadn't had any problems. We've only lose water every, lose some water, but nothing like we did this past year. Hopefully, if you can seal it up this year, we'll take a closer look and see what happens.
Now, is that just part of your overall maintenance? Is that where that comes on?
Yeah.
It's already budgeted and stuff?
Yeah.
I'd like to see if you're going to have to take those covers off and reseal them. That maybe if somebody go down there with a little control camera and actually check some of those lines to see if there may be something is padded with frost or some odd blocks go through.
Yeah, I'd be open to anything that will check those lines. I don't have a problem with that. I just didn't know who to contact to do that.
Several companies.
Water Department.
Water Department.
Water and Sewer. These camera lines.
Do they have a camera?
I believe we have access to them.
So I have some pictures of the PVC piping before we top it up, you know, when we, I took pictures as they redid the pool.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
There's a company in Brewer that's called Ydig and they have this system that they can put a liner inside of a piece of pipe and seal it up too. So I don't know if that's something of interest.
With PVC pipes?
I think anything, but it sounds what I looked up, so.
If you went down and scoped it and you saw that there was a major crack or something come up through, they have these things, they slide a sleeve down in there, then they pressurize and it seals right out against the existing pipe.
The one thing I've asked, been confused, because our pool is similar to the Brewer swimming pool. And I talked to Ken Hanscom, the recreation director there. They're able to keep water in there all year round. And the reason why, by keeping the water, that you don't have the heaving that comes up because the weight of the water keeps it from heaving. We aren't able to do that. We've always, the water seems to seep through and we use the same sealer. He has asphalt underneath it. And I asked him if he had a special liner put in. He says he didn't. But as I often wondered about why we lose it. This is from the day I first got here to now.
I don't, do they have a wall?
Yeah, they have a wall.
I thought it was sloped on both ends.
No, it's sloped all three, but they have the wall at the far end like we do.
Thank you.
Now, our wall is, that's the only thing that hasn't been replaced. And that was in 1954 when the pool was built.
Any other questions from the public on that?
I didn't see any swimming this year.
You don't want to go down the pipe.
We're going to add an item on the discussion here and it's item D. It's generator noise ordinance request. Susan?
Jeff, we've had, Jeff has been talking or has been receiving calls from some residents who have expressed concerns over ongoing generator noise from abutting properties. And they're here this evening and Jeff is here this evening. And we don't have ordinance regulations that for either decibel level testing, which likely wouldn't fall into this, or for any kind of regulation of use of a generator for the purpose of generating electricity or whatever for a residential use. So anyways, do you'd like to come up?
Would you come up and introduce yourself?
I'm Kim Johnson. I live at 1541 Bucks Mills Road. That's in the Bucks Mill acreage subdivision. So when we were thinking about purchasing the property, we looked at the subdivision plan that was originally presented. And there were 13 or 15 lots and 165 acres. And on the subdivision plan, it talks about how there were test pits for septic systems and where the wells have to be and that it was going to be for a single-family residence, no multi-family areas. It was just for homes. So I think it's more not a noise ordinance, but a land use ordinance that I might want something to enforce because it's like a camper van just parked on the lot. No plans submitted for electricity to be put in or septic system to be put in or.
And this was a, this was a, an approved subdivision with covenants that states that...
Yep.
Okay.
Who enforces the covenants?
Courts.
This is a civil court issue.
So we had police out and they just said that there was nothing to, there was no ordinance to enforce. So that's what I'm asking for something to enforce for that. And the reason being that the generator is very loud. I wouldn't care if the electricity...
This is way out.
The last house in town.
Oh, okay.
It's way out there. But there's a lot of homes being built out there.
Right, yeah.
And I mean, this is a growing town and, you know, I don't want it to be something that's.
Have you approached the owner of the subdivision?
Of the subdivision?
Well, the person that, the person that sub- subdivision, and maybe I was speaking out of turn, but they set up, you have covenants and rules and regulations to be in.
Yeah, it's on the paper that we have.
I'm pretty sure you're going to have to go to court to try to have those enforced. I don't think that there's anything that the town can do. And correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff. Susan?
If the town had an ordinance that said something about how long, Jeff and I have discussed this, isn't it, once it goes past seven months, it becomes, Jeff, you can address this better than I can, but there's time limitations based on how long a camper can be used as a...
We have a classification for seasonal occupancy. A person can occupy a recreational vehicle seasonally. By definition, that's minimum seven months in a calendar year. And that's what this gentleman's been doing. He's been living with his camper from, since May of this year. So pretty soon, it's going to be seven months. And he's already assured me that he'll be vacating the premises sometime next month.
So he comes up here in the summer?
Well, this is the first time he's done this and I'm not sure it's going to happen again. But it leads to the other issue about what if it does happen again, not for the Johnsons, but maybe another property where somebody parks a camper, runs a generator day and night and disturbs the next door neighbor.
Yeah, so it's not even as much as a recreational vehicle because there's a lot of properties along the road that have a camper parked in their yard that stays there year-round. And I don't think that's offensive and I don't think that bothers the neighbors. So it's not that. It's just that it's not the way the subdivision was designed.
Right, right.
And it's not being used for what it was designed for. And there should be something to enforce that says that they can't do that.
There's no electricity to this site? No plumbing permit?
He hasn't broke ground. I'm guessing that, I can't remember, I had a covenants where I built the subdivision. You had a year from the day you broke ground to be in. So he hasn't broke ground yet. It had to be complete. Like you couldn't, you know, if you broke ground, you couldn't cap your basement and make an apartment. It actually had to be a full-fledged house in Henderson. I don't know if Dale Henderson owns that subdivision too. Do you know who does this out? But yeah, that's, but it's a covenants. And I asked the same thing. Who's going to enforce the coven? When I built mine.
Right.
Yeah, it's unfortunate, but I think that...
So do you think, you think then that's, it's a civil action? Like it should be filed in court then?
Yeah, and that's what I was going to say.
It's a covenants violation.
Unfortunately, because, you know, that costs money to do that. But I think that's what you're stuck with is that there is, it sounds like from what you're saying, there's a violation of the covenants and that would be a civil matter. And so you'd have to probably hire legal counsel to do that.
Unless the subdivision expressly prohibits putting a, you know, locating a camper for a period of time or a temporary residence, I'm not sure that there, any covenant has been broken. I think that it's supposed to be constructed, single-family homes. But if they're a seasonal occupancy, you know, full-time, I would, the, I'm sure an attorney could tell you if the covenants covered this thing or...
Very often, the plans, subdivision plans that the planning board group have a condition of approval on them, several, but one of them is, and I haven't looked at this one yet to see if it's on this one, but it could be. And that is that lots are for one-family dwelling only.
Yeah, that's what it says.
I'm not sure what this gentleman's doing would necessarily violate that. Granted, it's not a one-family dwelling. By definition, it's an RV that he's using as a dwelling temporarily. But even if there was a house on that property, I don't believe there's any stipulation on the plan or any plan I've seen that says you can park an RV next door to your house and occupy it seasonally, have your family up in Florida. That happens all the time. And they might choose to run a generator if there's power not available for them. There's no easy answer to this, I think.
Well, I don't think if you, if you see a lawyer, that the lawyer's going to be able to tell you, I think the lawyer's going to be able to tell you whether or not this is something that, that it is a civil action matter. And it may be, I think it's at least worth your time to talk to a lawyer before you, before you start the civil scene.
What about under the noise ordinance? Where does the generator fall under a noise ordinance?
The noise standards we have in our land use ordinance pertain to commercial industrial uses, not to residential uses. So unfortunately, that's not enforceable in this case here. It's the DEP standards that dictate the decibel, maximum decibel level measured at the property line. But that just pertains to commercial and industrial uses, not residential, unfortunately.
But what about an RV? I mean, they don't have any septic system? Or do they have an outhouse out there or something or?
Well, they would be expected to dispose of their waste properly. And I have no evidence to the contrary that's taking place there.
Is there like a quiet time at all? Would there, like in big cities, like 10 o'clock's quiet time? Is it, is there something like that that could be enforced at all or not really?
You could, you could add whatever restrictions you wanted to, to your ordinance that would apply to this. But how it's enforced is a challenge.
Sure.
Something enforced by the court office, then they're not always around when the noise being generated. It might be enforceable by the police. So you could take a look at things like that.
I'd like to recommend that we send this to the ordinance committee. And in the meantime, Jeff, you take a look at the covenants on that subdivision.
The condition of approval.
Right. And then we'll have some discussion at ordinance committee meeting to see if it justifies actually doing something different.
How far are they from the line?
I don't know.
But I understand, you know, you buy a piece of property, what you think is a single-family subdivision and...
And now it's an RV park. Well, I mean, can't...
Anybody else like to make, make a comment on, or talk about this at all? Feel free to come up and introduce yourself. Anything else from the council?
Councilor Stewart indicated you're going to have an ordinance committee meeting prior to the next thing. Why don't you could add this to that agenda?
Next, what's next for?
Prior to the next council, maybe 10?
Should we be at the ordinance committee meeting?
Sure.
That'd be great.
It's open to the public.
Can you bring your covenants?
Yeah, we can. We have them.
But all of our, all of our meetings are open to the public, so.
Okay, all right.
And it's going to be...
I mean, would it weigh heavy if we're there to present our case to the committee? Someone asked, I think you asked, how the distance between both my...
I'm guessing that your, your covenants is going to say they got to be 25 feet from, or a dwelling or a structure has to be 25 feet from the...
Property line.
Property line.
There was variance for both properties. My property as well as that property got a variance where they put the driveway.
Okay.
Because of the hill there where the accidents happen all the time.
No, right, well, the driveway part isn't, unless they're just parked in the driveway.
That's where it is. It's right next to the driveway. And I would say it's probably about, the properties out there are 200 foot approximately frontage or a frontage. And I would say we're probably about 70 or 80 feet from where his generator is.
Is that supposed to be a shared driveway in his property?
Yeah, we're supposed to be, we're supposed to be shared driveway. But we own property lots one, two, and three. And part of another 20 acres in back, lot four.
Wow.
It's 35 total acres there. Useless property.
Beautiful property.
Rocks. Lots of rocks.
It is pretty.
And what's the date of our next?
November 10th, 6 o'clock.
November 10th at 6 o'clock, the ordinance committee meeting here.
Just to elaborate on what my wife said, had he had, had it been a single-family dwelling there and it was electric at the site, it wouldn't be a problem because he'd be running off the electric. He wouldn't need a generator. But the fact that it's not, it's a totally undeveloped lot, other than the driveway in there.
Does your power line runs by you?
Right by it. Yeah, right by it. Okay.
Thank you, thank you very much.
One more question. Is there a way to maybe contact the other person and see if, what their intent is of any sort? Is that, I don't know who would... Jeff, sorry, oh, okay.
The occupant of the RV came in to see me last week. I sent a letter to the property owner, who's different, by the way, to share the Johnsons' concerns.
Okay.
Asked to like speak to the occupant. He came in this evening.
Okay.
And he indicated, this is last week, he indicated that he intends to stay there no more than another two to three weeks. And after that, he's gone for the winter and probably won't be back if I understood him correctly.
So he's not the property owner?
No, no, he's a relative.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jeff.
Okay, thank you, Jeff.
Do we need a motion to send this to the ordinance committee?
No, you can sign it, whatever, you're gonna do that, at the end of the meeting, we've got those meetings to schedule.
Okay. All right. All right, item eight is agenda items, we don't really have anything on that. Item nine is resignations, appointments, assignments, and elections. Item A being appointing Kathy Downs as the election ward.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve Kathy Downs as the election ward, warden. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Oppose? Motion passes, thank you Kathy. We have to sign this, I believe? Okay, we're going on to item ten, approval of quick claim, uh, quick claims, discharges, and deeds, and we have one here, uh, for David Caruso, sewer lien for ninety-three Central Street.
Motion approved.
Second. We have a motion and second to approve the, uh, release of the lien, sewer lien for David Caruso, ninety-three Central Street. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Oppose, motion passes. Item eleven is town manager's report and department, uh, department head reports, Susan?
Um, first, I sent out twenty-three letters last week to property, owners of properties that were foreclosed on in two thousand fourteen, asking owners to contact the town to prevent further legal action or sale of their property. Many of these lots are land-only, some are rental properties, and a number have not had a tax payment for more than four years. The goal of the town is to work with owners to retain their property, but it is necessary for owners to agree to work with the town as well. So far, three, and it was three when I wrote this this morning, and it's now five owners have been in contact and either paid what was due in full or made arrangements to do so before the next tax bill goes out in two thousand seventeen. It is my goal to work through this list without having to bring any to the council for sale, and as a caveat to this, this list was much higher than twenty-three last year. It's, twenty-three is a smaller number, and people are responding, so, uh, we received numerous applications for the driver labor position with the highway department and have done some interviews, it is my intent that a decision on this hire be made by next week. Economic Development Director Rich Rotella and I met with representatives from the Main Street Bucksport this week to discuss the upcoming holiday season and plans that are being made to promote Bucksport and its businesses. As a reflection of Main Street spaces filling up, there is no plan this year for sponsoring pop-up shops, because there's literally nowhere for them to pop up, which is good for us, because that means business spaces are failing. A Main Street full of thriving businesses is one of the major goals of this community. More information will be forthcoming in the next several weeks on the seasonal events that will be held this year. More good news, we received our final year-end report for the fifteen, sixteen workers' compensation year, and our renewal application for two thousand sixteen, seventeen, and I am very pleased to report that the town's experience modification factor, which is what impacts how much we pay for the workers' compensation, is point six-six for the coming year. With that lower modification factor, the town will continue to pay substantially less for this coverage than we would if the town were sustaining a lot of claims. It is a reflection on the training and safety practices of the town departments, and on the care with which our employees perform their work. The loan closing for the sewer loan will be held on November twenty-first, which locks in that one point eight-seven-five percent interest rate, that saves the town more than one million dollars in interest payments over the twenty-eight-year life of the loan. We're making continued progress on the concrete sidewalks, replacing the bad sections in the downtown area, the contract is due to be completed by October thirty-first. I've received information related to the cost of zero sort, and I hope to have a solid waste committee meeting scheduled soon that we, so that we can move this process forward. It is much more affordable than we initially thought it might be. As far as the yellow schoolhouse project, I'm sure that many of you have noticed a dramatic change to that structure. The outhouse restoration has taken a bit more time than was anticipated due to some deterioration, but the project should be completed soon. The building is now back in use, and I'm getting good reports of the work that has been done, it looks, um, a lot better. The town has received a report back from the Department of Labor resulting from their inspection at the end of August for the Safety Works Program. Each department has an identified to-do list, much of which has already been done, in order to qualify for the SHAPE designation by the department. We have until the end of November to report back on the items identified. This is a great program and a positive way in which to assess our operations in terms of their compliance with all of the laws and regulations governing workplace safety. Thanks to Fire Chief Craig Bowden for taking the lead on this effort, and to all the other department heads and the town employees for their help in attaining it. The town and Marina docks and floats were removed this week, they were originally scheduled for removal last week, but that was put off to avoid filling the waterfront land area with floats just before Ghost Port. The process went smoothly this year, and we will be assessing what repairs need to be made to the floats, docks, et cetera, prior to the next in-the-water season. In two thousand and eleven, the town council here in Bucksport approved the acceptance of credit and debit cards for all municipal payments except property taxes. We have ongoing requests to allow this service. There is no additional cost to the town for the acceptance of credit or debit cards since customers pay the fees associated with the use of the cards. There was concern at one time over payments that might be made on taxes that were about to go to tax lien status in the event that a credit or debit card transaction was revoked by the customer. However, this issue is of no greater risk for credit or debit cards than it is for accepting a personal check for tax payments, which we do as well. And unless there are objections by the council, I will be including a resolve on the next agenda to allow credit and debit card payments for property taxes. The annual bag lead pickup by the public works crew will be held on Monday, November fourteenth, for all residents in areas served by municipal water and sewer. And, I think, that's it.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I have one more thing. Um, I also will be asking for a sewer committee meeting, because we're now five quarters into the new sewer rates, and at, at the rate we're generating, I'm going to ask the sewer committee to make the base rate the same for all sewer users, that it be at eighteen-hundred instead of, for those on town water having eighteen-hundred, and those without town water but on town sewer having twenty-one-hundred. It's a twenty-seven dollar and change difference that would result in a loss of approximately twelve thousand dollars a year in revenue, which is manageable and which makes that, that minimum rate more equitable for the hundred-and-eleven people that are not on town water, who are paying the sewer charge, to have that same one sixty-seven, twenty-two, as opposed to one ninety-five, oh nine. So, that's-
We need to have a meeting.
Well, I, I'm gonna make that recommendation, you're, you have to change your sewer ordinance in order to do it, so, that's why I need to-
Could that be, could that be part of the ordinance committee meeting on November tenth?
You're gonna at times discuss chapter six?
That shouldn't take long.
I don't think we're gonna discuss chapter six on that day.
I mean, that's-
Anyway, those are-
I think we all kinda feel that it, that it's fair that those hundred-and-eleven people should be charged the same as everybody else.
It's not gonna take long, so.
Well, we, we waited to see what revenues we're gonna do and how this came out, and, and we, as we've said, we've been monitoring things to see how they're going, so if we can level that playing field a bit, it would be, I think, well-received.
Pretty sure we take care of that.
Put that on the tenth, then.
Okay.
But, does that go to the sewer, does that go to the ordinance? Doesn't have to go both, right?
No, you can send it to ordinance if sewer doesn't care.
Perfect. I'm on both.
Okay, any questions from the public on any of those items? Okay, if not, we're going to go on to, uh, set public hearings, hold public hearings, approvals, any licenses or permits? I don't believe we have any, yes, Jeff?
There is a public hearing that you have to hold, I think I might have forgotten to mention this to the town manager, but the planning board, at their last meeting, held a public hearing on the proposed changes that you sent to them on, uh, Appendix K, uh, they, there was no public attendance, but, uh, the plan was all approved of the changes, and their recommendation is to, for, to you, uh, for your consideration to approve of those changes. You have to hold a public hearing for those changes to be, uh-
Yeah, we'll, we'll do it on the tenth.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have no licenses or permits? Okay, we're gonna go to item thirteen, discussion items not on the agenda for the council of public. I'm gonna open it to the public first. Any discussion items from the public?
I'll go first. Rich Rotella, Community and Economic Development Director, just wanted to give you a heads-up of what's been going on in the last two weeks since we last met. Um, you may have seen some activity going on at the Lewison-Mon building, that's because State Farm Insurance will be moving in, they should be completely in within the next couple of weeks. The Lighthouse Art Center hosted its open house on the fourteenth of October, there was upwards of a hundred people in attendance. The building is still under construction, so currently she's now residing in the David-Mott Building, formerly H&R Block. The mill site has had continued and growing interest. Uh, the Feldman Properties is now starting to have more interest in it as well. Heart and Soul has completed four block parties with the fifth and final one on November thirteenth, this will be held at the Erie Center on the River Road. Uh, please come out to the, listen to some stories, some music, and share some meals. Uh, the town hosted, uh, some small business seminars in combination with the SBDC and New Ventures Main. That five weeks ended last Tuesday, we had great attendance numbers, uh, twenty-six, nineteen, twenty-one, eighteen, and the last one had thirteen. Last night, we added an extra week to this and held a, uh, social media marketing, unfortunately we only had six attendees, but they did get a lot out of it. Uh, today, I represented the town at the Small Business Boot Camp, which was held in Bangor, there were over fifty small business owners or potential owners. I had a table there and some positive conversations, uh, with people out that way. Tuesday, I will be heading to Augusta for the Main Digital Government Summit, you should have received an email from me that I'll be representing the town there. The Bucksport, Bucks Town Heritage Park sign's been ongoing for me, unfortunately, I couldn't get that completed this year, so the old sign has been reinstalled and is currently up. I wanna thank Northeast Cable Construction LLC, who is in our Bucks Town Heritage Park for doing that for us. There is a new ADA accessible handicap ramp at Bucksport House of Pizza, it was completed today. Bucksport High School's woodshop class will be building eight, eight-foot picnic tables for the waterfront for the next season. Uh, Ghost Port was held last week, last weekend, we had great attendance despite the weather, and for all those wondering, the fireworks were postponed and are scheduled for this Saturday night. Sir?
I see some stakes down at the White's Exxon property. Is something moving forward down there? Looks like they put some stakes up with fluorescent paint on the top of them, it looks like maybe the outline of a building or something, uh, do you have an update on that?
I met with Jeff Ledbetter earlier this week, and Jeff, um, will be going forward, it should be starting within the next couple of weeks for his, um, groundbreaking over there.
Thank you.
Yes.
Rich, whatever became of the proposal we had from, I think it was Channel Two or-
We filmed the, we filmed the video, uh, just working on the dialogue right now, I had a couple of the projects that I was finishing up as well, so, that's next on a priority and will, and should be completed by tomorrow.
Okay, and, and for, start showing-
They're gonna edit and make some minor tweaks, and then, yeah, hopefully before the fifteenth of November, I'm hoping it'll be up and running.
Any comment from the public on any things that were brought up?
Yeah, I have a question, you said something about picnic tables on the waterfront?
Yes. Yes, the Bucksport High School shop class, who built the table for the Chamber of Commerce last year, will be building eight, eight-foot picnic tables for the waterfront.
Good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other discussion items from the public? From the council?
I have one, um, on forty-six, is, uh, where, where the culvert washed out, um, I think it was last winter.
By Hancock Pond.
By Hancock Pond, that, that, that's getting pretty deep, and I think before winter time, before our snow contractor loses a blade, or somebody gets an axe out there, we could have somebody attend to that, whether it's the state or us to, to fill that in.
I believe the state does that.
Okay, we'll get it in a minute.
You're gonna be on it?
Get on it.
Okay.
I just would, I, we got this, um, paper from the Bucksport Area Culture Arts Society about the Wilson Hall proposal, I just didn't know if, I'm not sure what that's about, I didn't know if you had some information, or, if you know more about this, or, at all.
Um, the town council at the last meeting, um, authorized Jeff to, um, seek proposals for the use of Wilson Hall, and Bacchus was present and presented one that they had, but the town, but the town is looking at a number, or, has advertised for more entities who may be interested.
Fantastic, thank you.
Any other discussion items from, for the council? If not, we will go on to item fourteen, upcoming public hearings, designation of topics for committee assignments, or scheduling of committees. It sounds like we did schedule a public hearing for the tenth. Is there any other that we have to have?
I'd like to, um, have a Streets and Roads Committee. Last, less than, last month, there's been two pretty bad accidents out at the intersection of Doc Cove and Forty-six, and I know in other towns that they have looked at where roads, for lack of a better, there really isn't a whole lot of reason to, for that access road to be there the way it's constructed now, and I think, I'd like to have the Streets and Roads Committee maybe look at ending that road and using Russell Hill as the, as the only thoroughfare through there, instead of that short piece of four hundred yards of Doc Cove.
That comes right in on that turn.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Is that something we'd have to do DOT with?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
I think it's a great idea.
Okay, so Streets and Roads, um, I'd like a Finance Committee meeting, a brief one.
Five-thirty?
Yep, five-thirty, Rich, do you mind?
On the tenth?
Sure, on the tenth is, well, we start at noon.
Finance, Finance Committee at, uh, five-thirty on the tenth. Do we have any other assignments?
Are we Streets and Roads that day too, or?
Well, if you wanna do Finance at five-thirty, it'll be over by five-forty-five, so you can-
And the Streets and Roads one, I mean, obviously, there's gonna be DOT involved in-
It's just to make a referral.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. You wanna do Streets and Roads at five-forty-five?
And then we're Ordinance at six, right? Who's bringing dinner?
Order six or seven?
Any other meetings we need to schedule? If not, we're going to go on to item fifteen.
Move adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for adjournment. All those in favor? Oppose? Motion passes.